One, good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, April 17th work session meeting of the Penfield Town Board. We would like to call this meeting in order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Barry?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Ackenden?
Here.
Ecklisch?
Here.
Leanhouse?
Here.
All right, first agenda item is approval of the minutes. Everybody get a chance to peek and any discussion? Get a motion to approve them? Or do we just approve them?
I'll take a motion to approve minutes from March 20th, 2024.
Second.
All right, vote please, Sue.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Ecklisch?
Aye.
All aye?
Okay, guests, we don't, we have no guests on the agenda for this evening. We'll move right into our first action item, which is county road bike lane project. And Director Tate is here to enlighten us on this.
Sure, thank you. The, recently, the Monroe County Department of Transportation reached out inquiring about the town's opinion and thoughts about bike lanes on county roads. With that, they do have a few roads slated for roadway improvement projects this year, being State Road from Plank up to the Webster Town Line, Salt Road from Atlantic to 441, and then Carter Road from 441 down to the Parington Town Line and actually into the town of Parington. With that, there are some minimum criteria to be eligible and for the bike lanes themselves, the road surface needs to be at least 32-foot wide to accommodate either 10 to 12, or 10 to 11-foot travel lanes and then a 5-foot, 5- to 6-foot wide shoulder. You know, as part of the road surfacing, resurfacing projects, they will need to restripe the road and it's easy enough to kind of change the actual travel lane width and the, compared to the shoulder width when they restripe that and then potentially stripe the actual bike lane signage. However, to be a legally posted bike lane, they would need to also install no standing signs at a maximum spacing of 200-foot apart on both sides of the road for the entire duration. As part of that, they would be willing to cover the cost as part of their project for the striping of the roads as well as the installation of the signage. However, they would, or what they're proposing is to turn these signs over to the town. The town would then own and maintain those signs on a county road, kind of once that project is complete. Kind of going quick, you know, measurements, the section along State Road would be approximately 88 signs, give or take, and then Salt and Carter is over 130 signs. These are signs that are not there present. We do, the town does not own or maintain any signs on county roads presently. This would be essentially setting a precedent and the town would be taking over the ownership, the maintenance and liability of those signs. This was discussed with the Transportation Committee last night. Transportation Committee was unanimously in favor of the consideration of bike lanes, however, did have reservations about the town owning and maintaining these signs. So I wanted to, to share this with, with you as the board for consideration. Mark, you've got anything to add in?
Yeah, I mean, the Transportation Committee also had concern about the look and aesthetic of 120 signs on Salt Road. You know, the group is very supportive of bike lanes, very supportive of, you know, bikeability in East Penfield, but had some concerns of what the look and aesthetic, you know, that may kind of change, you know, kind of what that rural character looks like with a sign every 200 feet to, you know, designate a bike lane. So just wanted to add that to Eric's comments, that there was some concern about that as well.
I mean, a lot, a lot of the properties have, you know, rather wide road frontage. They may have at least one, if not two or more, signs in their, in each of their front yards.
And the signs say no standing, so that wouldn't allow anybody to park on the shoulder of the road. The concern came up with UPS deliveries, Amazon deliveries, you know, regular trucks, landscape trucks pulling off on the side of the road. Technically, they'd be in violation of the bike lane, just, you know, parking on the shoulder doing normal day-to-day business.
That's what I was going to ask, is, so if somebody's having a party at their house...
They would technically be in violation of the bike lane of parking on the shoulder of the road.
Gotcha.
So, the committee was mixed. We don't want to come off that we're not supportive of bike lanes or not, you know, obviously very supportive of that and biking, but the current conditions associated with what they're putting out there, you know, seemed a little excessive and I don't think it's the county's stance. I think it's federal or state guidelines on what to designate a bike lane. Here's the rules and regulations for it.
I have two questions. What's the projected cost for the ongoing maintenance on an annual basis?
I mean, if no one runs the signs over, there would probably be none, but just knowing that, you know, if they get picked off by a snowplow or something else, you know, I think you said the signs were...
Probably $30 to $50 per sign.
That's just for the sign and then you gotta replace a post and then obviously time and labor for staff to go out there and do that.
So is there like a estimated, I'm just...
I mean, I, I mean, once the signs are in, there's really no cost, but it's just every 200 feet, it's likely, you know, they're going to get run over at some point, so that's, you know, we'd have to budget some amount to replace every year. I think the committee's more focused was on the look and aesthetic of, you know, what that's going to do to the visual, you know, impact of, you know, having that on these rural roads.
And these two proposed bike lanes, it's my understanding that there are no, no designated bike lanes in Penfield, so it's, once they leave that where the proposed bike lane is now, they're going to be just entering the standard flow of traffic, right? So it's not necessarily connecting to an existing bike lane or making a whole commute safer. It's just those two random, currently disconnected streets that the county is proposing.
Correct. And they, they meet the physical standards of their criteria. That's why they kind of, you know, pick those and they're floating it out to the towns to see the interest of the communities. As you said, they don't connect anything, they don't complete a north-south route or anything else. Not a lot of people bike in East Penfield and were supportive of wider shoulders and, you know, restriping and doing all that, but a designated bike lane was, was in question.
Mark, when they, so are, is the road width increasing?
Not for those.
And is the, so what, when they add a bike lane, what happens to shoulder shrinks?
No, often they make the, sorry, go ahead, Eric.
I was going to say, it's actually just the opposite. The travel lane actually narrows up to accommodate a larger shoulder.
Okay.
So instead of being a...
It's just a...
Yeah, so instead of being a, you know, say it's a 12-foot driving lane with a 4-foot shoulder today, they would shrink it to an 11-foot and a 5-foot, or a 10-foot and a 6-foot.
So I don't know if there's a way we can advocate, just stripe it with the 11-foot lanes and the 5-foot shoulder and leave it as that and...
Yeah, I don't know if that's a choice. Is it, Eric?
I also do not know. I mean, I can certainly reach out. If it is, being a county road, it would be, you know, at their discretion, but I can see if that's an option to at least stripe it with a slightly narrower travel lane, but a wider shoulder.
That may also help with traffic coming. As you stripe a narrower lane, people feel a little more confined and tend to drive a little bit slower than kind of a wider country road, you know, tend to go a little faster, so that may also help kind of decrease speeds a little bit.
My thought is, I'm all for bike lanes, it's just the signs almost seems more dangerous with all these signs to, not like you're going to read them all, but I'm not sure if it would solve the intent of making it safer. And I don't know how long a sign lasts, five to 10 years, you know, eventually we have to replace them. But if we could do a bike lane without the signs, I guess, I don't know if that's what the Transportation Committee was kind of conveyed or...
That's kind of where the group was, is if we can stripe the lanes and have wider shoulders and make it safer for bikes, great, but making it a designated bike lane came with all the extra signage and, you know, the impacts that they didn't think were beneficial in that instance.
Any other thoughts? So how do we leave it, Eric? Or what's the action item today?
I mean, so it wouldn't, if, if this group, I'd say only if this group was supportive of doing that, then it would need to have a, an actual resolution to be willing to accept dedication of those signs. If this group does not, you know, is not in favor of doing such, then no action is needed. I would follow up with the county to let them know.
Okay, so it's specific on the signs, not just striping the road?
Correct. I mean, I'll, I can certainly follow up with them as far as inquiring about the potential options to stripe, but no action would be needed unless the, we're going to take the formal bike lanes and the signage.
There's no option in the striping of the road to print no parking in the striping, which would convey the same message, right? Having these signs up or...
Yeah, the, the legal standard by vehicle and traffic law would require the, the signage.
So I will share echoing the split sentiment of the Transportation Committee. I'm not in favor of, of again, launching a project that seems pretty disjointed to begin with, if there were a town-wide, a much more thoughtful proposal to connect these two something or somewhere, but these seem pretty random to me. Salt and State Road are both, I would say, less frequently traveled roads in comparison to like 441, right? And especially on Salt Road where I think it's kind of not having the bike lane there currently, I, I don't see that as a significant safety risk, just because it's less traveled, the road is wider, so that bikers could probably be more safely accommodated than 441 or 5 Mile where there's going to be intense, more intense traffic. I'm also not in favor of making it a no standing area that, for these houses, if they rely on the shoulder or that is their kind of safe street parking. I think the cons for me outweigh two very disjointed, it's not a well enough implemented plan for me, so I'm not, I'm not opposed if you wanted to get the clarifying questions, but my sentiment currently is I'm not in favor. And I'm also not in favor of taking ownership of county lines and the designation, the ongoing maintenance that I've asked for. If we have an estimate, it doesn't sound like an estimate, so I'm just running the cost of approximately $50 upwards of 200 times the 200-plus signs. I just don't see the benefit for townwide.
Sure. Yeah, I'm with you. Any, any other comments?
No, I would, I would agree. I think wholeheartedly. I like the idea, the concept, but not really liking the, the sign visual pollution perhaps, along with, you know, the neighbors and how they might feel about restricted parking. I know I happen to live in proximity to Harris Whalen and once a year, they come through and put up no parking signs for probably only 24 hours or something along those lines, but there's this immediate like, oh my gosh, what am I going to do? I can't park, you know, I can't have somebody over and park there and tell anybody, park my lawn. You know, there's this panic that sets in for, ridiculous for only 24 hours, but there's a sense of losing something. So I would, I would agree with Candace, though. I would, if they want to restripe, that makes it more bike friendly, that would be great. I don't know that they'll change from maybe their standard, but it's, I certainly think it'd be worth the question.
Sure.
I agree also. I think that more residents would be inconvenienced than bikers would be accommodated, so...
Absolutely. All right, well then we can move on with no action.
Thank you.
All right, Wells Brook subdivision sidewalk waiver request.
Yeah, we got the tree law, I think you missed one.
Oh, thank you. Public tree law update, yeah. Go ahead. Either way, it's, it's you, Mark.
So this is an update, was before this board, a little while ago, kind of wanted to show that the EEECC is still working on this, as was requested by the, the board. We still have to obviously work on, you know, the rest of, of the tree law and in the inventory and all that to be a Tree City USA, but just wanted to kind of show the board this was progressing. The board had, you know, comments, questions, concerns, you know, about town trees versus public trees and some clarification, you know, of, of who's in charge, how are the decisions made. Obviously, you know, we need to still get the arborist on board, we still need to come up with, you know, the preservation plan and that portion of it, but kind of just wanted to bring it back to the board, show this was, you know, hadn't fallen off EEECC's agenda and just his response to the board showing that that's in progress. I don't know if we need an official vote on it tonight, it's still a, a draft, but wanted to put it back before the board, see, you can see, you know, kind of where it's heading, make sure, you know, that's in, in kind of the direction that you were thinking. And then obviously, you know, we can still, you know, move ahead with, you know, the, the arborist and then, you know, getting the other stuff, you know, as part of the plan together. So we had it as an action item tonight, but I don't know if it needs a, a vote at this time. Just want to make sure the board is, you know, okay with the direction that we're moving.
I have two questions. For a public tree being defined as town-maintained property, so if a tree is in an area where it's on a resident property, but the town has an easement and the tree is there, would we go and maintain the tree? No. Okay, so what's the difference between town-maintained property and town right-of-way? Or I guess right-of-way would be like on a street.
Yeah, so I mean, we own pond property in town, obviously we own parks, we own this, you know, this property here, then we also have town-owned right-of-way. There's also county and state right-of-way. So I think that's, was just trying to clarify that we don't own all the right-aways in town, so just to try to, you know, define that it's our right-of-way, but if it's in a storm sewer easement and the neighbor plants a tree, it's still their tree. We've got the right to go in and remove the tree if we need to maintain the pipe, but we don't take responsibility for that tree, the trimming, the removal, the maintenance if, you know, unless we have a, a problem that needs to be handled in that easement.
So town-maintained means easements too?
No. So we don't, say it's a storm sewer easement, a drainage easement, if it's, so I guess we should, could say town-owned land? I guess that's a wordsmithing, I think we said maintain for, I mean, you look at right-aways, I guess we own the right-of-way, but it kind of just sounds a little, I'd say awkward to say we, you know, we own the road, we own the right-of-way portion, but I guess...
You don't, you don't mow my right-of-way in front of my house, you don't really mean that either.
Yeah, so I guess we can work with council on how to best describe that. You know, we own the right-of-way, but we don't mow your front lawn between, you know, the curb box and the, and the edge of the street. You, you still mow it, but it's, you know, technically town right-of-way.
It's in the definition of public tree. And then my second question was, I, I see the red lines throughout that, that puts the final decision-making power in the director of public works and/or their designee, and I, and I appreciate that, but I, I think my concern and what I was trying to convey to the EEECC or, or align with them is that it would, I, I'm trying to have just more than one person be the decision, the final arbitration on a matter. And so if it's, if there's a body and, and I, and I, I'm okay with a draft now because I know it's going to be in line with the...
The forestry plan.
The forestry plan and, and the title, the arborist, right? So that there's going to be, I just want to make it more neutral and more objective and, and so that if a person, like a, if a resident were to object, that it's not just...
There's an appeal body or something.
Resident versus one person, right? But that there's a governing, either a governing document, a governing body, like a committee or the town, somebody, so that a, a resident who has an opportunity to object has that versus the person on site saying, nope, I deem it diseased, it's out.
Okay. And some of that was, it's going to be in the forestry plan, so it's a, the guideline document would, you know, regulate how and when and where, you know, would be in the forestry plan to, you know, to dictate that, so it wouldn't be a snap judgment, it would have, you know, criteria and everything else, and then when does it get referred to the arborist and, you know, when are they brought on board for that, but...
So I, I think, at least in my mind, and again, it's however the committee or, or, you know, town attorney can also weigh in, but just a small tweak to say, you know, the director or the department, the town, designee, whoever, you know, in compliance with the forestry plan or in conjunction with the forestry plan or something, so that there's...
Tie that together.
Just, yeah, so that it's not just one decision maker.
Yep.
Yeah, that, I, I agree, Candace. I think that's, those are very good points. I do appreciate the work that the EEECC has put together on this, and I've read through all the comments and you can see they're really working through. One of the key things, and this might also be part of the forestry plan, is as I read through the comments, it was communication and the transparency and when trees are removed and, and making sure that we're keeping track, understand that if it's a hazard, it's posing some type of hazard, that you've got to fix it first. But for other situations, whether it's our parks or our, our public department, that we have some type of communication and we know what we've done, because we are asked, I don't know about the rest of you, but I am asked, why are those trees down? And I would love to be able to point them somewhere or at least have that knowledge as to why trees were removed. So I think we've got to make sure, and again, that might be in the forestry plan, that we have a clear, you know, cut communication plan of when we're taking trees down and the reason we had to remove them, and we documented that so that we can be fully transparent to the residents.
Okay. Yeah, we can make sure that that's detailed in that plan. And obviously, that, that's forthcoming, so we don't have that to share, share with you, but just did want to share this document and just kind of show the progress that's being made, the, the committee is still working on it. Sounds like, you know, it's moving in the right direction, which is good. Kind of just want to make sure, you know, the board is, is supportive of that and then obviously we can get going to the forestry plan and keep moving on.
I also appreciate that they talked about the topping of trees, about removing branches and not having a need to do that, because that does also affect the tree and it affects the wildlife, so I appreciate that being in there as well.
And just following up, Mark, and looking at, at the definition of public tree, I can't think of an example of town-maintained property separate and apart from town-owned or town rights-of-way that's already there.
I'm sure they pulled it from something else and maybe some other town does it differently or how, where they pulled the, the base sample from, but I can circle back with Matt and, and Sarah on that and clarify that. Okay.
You know, it's a good point. Now, where I live, there's trees in the right-of-way, probably planted by the developer and it brings up a good point.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
All right, nothing else? We can move to the Wells Brook sidewalk. Mark?
So, so this is a request from the developer, so I'm just pulling the plat map up on the screen. So the Wells Brook development, we just had the pre-con meeting on, it's just getting started. So this is that triangular piece between Shoe Craft, Plank and State, kind of that middle piece, used to be the Gasberry property, if anybody knew it as that. So they don't have a whole lot of frontage on any one particular road, but in looking at your map, they've got a small bit of frontage on State Road, they've got a small bit of frontage on Plank Road on the south, and then a very small bit of frontage on, on Shoe Craft is, is kind of their access into that. So they're asking for a sidewalk waiver, as there are no current sidewalks that connect to any of those areas. Obviously, then they would fall under, if the waiver was granted, our policy to provide, you know, funds back into the general fund, so we can spend those on, on other locations. So when doing their, I don't know if anybody else needs the map up, but doing their calculation, so we've got our standard calculation, we put in the number of lots, the linear foot of frontage in there, I can make it bigger if it's helpful on the screen, the linear foot of frontage, and then we put in the, the county bid price cost. So based on our calculation, they would over, oh, over just over $20,000. So they've asked to have that, if that was granted, have that payable with each building permit. So 22 building permits, they would pay, you know, basically $1,000 each building permit they come in, they make the payment at that time, that goes into the designated town sidewalk fund, so then those funds could be used at a future date on another location or location we may discuss later tonight.
And as you were saying, if they were to put it in, it would be disjointed, right? There would be a...
Yeah, there are, let me see if I can, I'll just pull up a...
Trying to read this map.
There.
Okay.
And there, and then...
Yeah, so I'm pulling up an aerial photo now, so currently, if you're looking at your screen, we've got sidewalks along Plank Road except for one house, and that's on this year's agenda here. So there's sidewalks, I'll just move across, you can see it. There are no sidewalks currently on Shoe Craft and then State Road, there are no sidewalks on State in this area. There's further up Shoe Craft, so the, the little piece that they've got here, they've got a little piece that's on the opposite side of where we're looking to continue sidewalks, and then they've got a little piece here. So really, they don't have a lot of frontage and they currently don't tie into anything, so it kind of made sense to, to us and the PRC committee that if the board's open to it, they've got a future lot 23, which is here, they've got some more frontage here and here, but that's a separate application, we'll come back to that at some point in the future, so that's not included in that calculation today. So they, if and when the future board looks at it, they could either decide and put it in if there's sidewalks nearby or, you know, they, they would again then pay that fee sometime in the future.
All right, any questions? Makes sense to me.
I just, I want to make sure, because I, it makes sense right now, right? It makes all the sense in the world right now, but if we look back in 15 years, will it have made sense? If we've developed all the rest of the properties and now this is more popular and people want that sidewalk? That's what I'm always trying to think, is like, okay, it makes sense right now, but what about five years, 10 years? Did it make sense?
Yeah, so to that point, we always take an easement. So we will take a sidewalk easement across that frontage, so it's not a fight with a property owner or anybody in the future. So if today we say we waive it, obviously they're not on the hook to pay for the cost in the future, but we already take the easement. So we'll take an easement here, here and here, so if and when 50, 100 years from now we're all gone and the next person comes along, I hope I make their life a little bit easier, the next town engineer's life a little bit easier, is that we'll already have the easement in place. So we require the easement, whether we grant the waiver or not, the easement's there, that gets filed with their, their paperwork, the plat map. So somewhere down the road, maybe someday there will be a sidewalk there and somebody will want it, the easement's already in place and we'll hopefully make it a little bit easier.
All right, and that, and what you're saying is, and it won't be like the conversation we had a couple months ago about Shoe Craft, oh, we'd have to get...
Exactly, and then we're going back to the homeowner or the homeowners association or whatever at the time, and they go, yeah, we really don't feel like granting it or we're not, you know, open to that now. Well, no, we already had, took the easement back and in 2024, we took the easement, thanks, but we've got the right and, you know, can continue on. So we always take that, no matter whether we, you know, give a waiver or not, we just take it and then file it and then it's, obviously that runs with the land forever, so we'll have it somewhere down the road if needed.
I appreciate it, thank you.
And if we ever decide to do sidewalks, we're still going to run to that same issue if we did the whole street in terms of...
I mean, you'll run into the, the other neighbors and negotiate that, but at least as we're looking at these development pieces, we make sure at least we've secured one little piece along the way, so...
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So if you can do a roll call vote, typically we don't do a resolution, but I send a letter, we document it and then, but if we can just do a roll call vote, does the board...
To grant the waiver.
To grant the waiver.
Barry?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Ecklisch?
Aye.
Okay, great. Moving on to some informational items. First, we have our overall sidewalk requests, receive the date and kind of next step discussions, and back to you, Mark.
So I shared out, so since our last meeting, obviously, when again, shared tonight, you know, we're collecting, you know, data and information. Since our last meeting, our list has obviously grown. You know, we've gotten, now we're up to $3.6 million worth of requests, you know, which is, I would say, a great problem to have, but I'm glad there's community interest, I'm glad there's, you know, public input on it. So tonight, I'm just kind of sharing, you know, that information to the board, provide it to you, I owe you a map and I owe you a rubric for it. So not looking for the board to take action on that tonight, just kind of wanted to share where we're at. Obviously, talking about it again this evening, we may get more, you know, and continue to add to that list, and then, you know, was looking ahead of your May work session to get the map out well ahead of that time, get the rubric out to you, you know, provide you some input to give you opportunity to then discuss and debate where we go to in the 2025 year for sidewalks. So that part is an update. I have a second piece to that included in your drop is right now, and we talked about it briefly at the, the public hearing, is the county has out right now a program that they would do 50% of sidewalk costs. That being said, I think it's a first-come, first-serve opportunity, so just looking, and we did put a, a potential sketch in your drop, let me go back before I mess it up. I had Matt Prinzing kind of put together a sketch showing, okay, Councilman Tegel, she brought up, you know, Jackson Road, that's something we've been talking about recently, we've talked about Plank Road and then 5 Mile's been on our radar for a while. So this, I think Gunners has requested sidewalks, you know, in those drop materials, and again, looking at if we're completing blocks or com... So kind of here's the DPW complex, now, just to try to fit on the screen, here's the town hall. I know we've had requests from people in Rocco Pines. They're up here, you know, connecting in, going down Plank Road. This is Chutes on Plank Road, if you're, just to orient you, the one gap we're going to complete. And then Five Mile, we already have this on our agenda for this year. There's a small piece that would kind of complete that Five Mile segment going to the north. And then we've got the other small piece at the bottom end that we're already kind of looking at now. So just kind of compiling all those together, I know it's quick, but didn't know, one, if we want to allocate additional funds towards sidewalks, because obviously, if they're matching 50%, how much do we want to, you know, put into that? We do have some ARPA funds left. But being where we are, we've got to kind of move quickly, because as to my understanding, the funds need to be allocated by the end of 2024, which means I think we need to be under contract with someone. So we need to basically have these approved, have them designed, and basically have a contract awarded to someone to move ahead with these, to be allocated by the end of 2024. So I know that's kind of fast for ARPA. I've also spoke with our comptroller, and she says, obviously, there are additional funds available for, like, under the capital improvement projects, you know, we could allocate, or the board could allocate additional funds to that. It's all predicated on, you know, would the county match that? Does that make sense with their program? But I just kind of threw these out, the board may have other locations, but just kind of picked, you know, three kind of county roads that are kind of central, you know, into the town and around the town hall, and ones we've kind of heard from before. So I think a couple of things, are we good with a subset, some of these sidewalks? And then, you know, do we want to allocate additional funds to that to at least send off to the county, and then see if the county's supportive? Then obviously, we have to come back and then talk about design and talk about, you know, path forward. So I know I'm throwing a lot at you, but just knowing the timeliness of this grant, I just didn't want to go pass this by and...
Mark, can you just clarify? I was just trying to look back between screens. The projects that we have slated for this year, are any of these part of that?
Portions of them. So right now, so if you're looking at the screen in front of you, so this piece between, here's Embry, up to Shoe Craft is allocated in the 2024. I looped it in here and figured if we're doing it, we can include it in the county ask or whatever, and maybe they help support, you know, something we've already kind of got going this year. This portion is not, so this would be the completion of Five Mile, so we'd complete, now we've got the piece from Plank down. This small piece down here, south of Rothfuss Park, is in this year's budget, so this piece is in. This piece is in here. This is not. This small piece at Crown Point finishes that section, that is in this year's budget. Obviously, this Plank Road piece is not, and then this piece down Jackson is not, but it's one of the pieces, I know we've heard from, had some residents come in, we've gotten a couple of emails, you know, from the neighbors.
It does make a nice connection, I guess, all the way from Rothfuss.
That's why we kind of, as we started, you know, mapping it out and, you know, to...
You can get Rothfuss to Town Hall to...
And that's some of the point, and Eric was talking, from here, you can walk, you know, from Jackson Road all the way down to Ronducky Bay and Empire Boulevard, and, you know, would be a big piece. And if we can get some assist from the county to kind of help, you know, complete that effort, that might be a good opportunity.
So I did actually get the county's, I saw it was in the drop, I did get it in the mail.
Yeah.
It wasn't clear to me if it had to be new projects or already in-flight projects. So if we, I think, just for, just talking this out, since the ones that we have already dedicated for 2024 are, some are represented here, what, how do you guys feel about submitting this plan already with the county? I don't know how long it takes for the response, but if they come back as approving it, then great, at least we got some 2024 projects funded by half. But if they reject, like, if we're too late, or we're not one of the towns selected, then we're not necessarily married to this plan, right? And we can consider, the other, like, the Rocco Pines connection, for example, can be considered with the other 2025 requests.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure, obviously, the board is supportive of, you know, obviously, we have to do an application and send this map and list off what we're doing. But obviously, you know, I quickly estimated, I think it, I put that in your drop as well...
A million two or something like that?
Yeah, so 50% of that is 600,000. Nope, wrong map. One more. There we go. Yeah, so I quickly just kind of put together all the Jackson, Penfield Center to Plank Road, you know, the lineal footage, you know, so we're just over about 1.3 million. So obviously, I just want to make sure, if they all of a sudden they say yes, let's go for it, we've got to allocate additional, you know, funds. This isn't included in our regular sidewalk funds. We'd have to allocate additional funds from some other source. So we can send it off, the county says yes, we'll do it, you know, if the board's supportive, you know, obviously, we can do that, and then find the funds at that point.
So this is as of December 2023, so Barb can definitely verify, but per my notes, we have $559,643, so about 560K remaining of ARPA, and like you said, has to be allocated by 12/31 this year.
Yep.
So if we did move forward, I mean, if we decide to use some or most of ARPA, that pretty much exhausts all of ARPA, but...
Yeah, well, just to jump in, a couple of comments. And the way I understand it, and this has all been happening quickly, so, you know, I may stumble a little bit, but I don't know if ARPA funds can be used for construction involving engineering. I don't know if that's...
You can't use it for the design portion of it.
Okay.
So we'd have to find, I mean, all of these sidewalks, I don't know if we could handle those internally in the quick turnaround, so we may have to, you'd have to allocate additional funds for the design side. So you're correct in that, but they could be used for the construction portion of it, but not any sort of design, land acquisition, you know, all of that, we'd have to do that separately.
Okay. And the other part of this is thinking this is a unique opportunity, and it's a 50% match, and we want to take advantage of it. We, you know, the negative is we have to move quickly. I'm not so concerned where the funds come from, but that we submit something quick because we're in a race maybe against other towns, and it's, you know, once it's depleted, it's gone, it's the one-time shot, and so I'm going to believe that. And my thought would be to do something like, like, you know, the design has it. I love connecting Plank Road to Jackson. Jackson's a challenge if you drive down, and I think I talked to Eric a little bit about it. It's possible you have to go down the west side, to the west side, and then move to the east side when you're halfway down, because there's wetlands, and maybe there'd be a crosswalk. But I, you know, I'm not so worried about that. And then I think, in my opinion, don't, you also want the county to approve this, and they, they probably don't want little projects, I'm guessing? I don't know. But I think we take advantage of it, and I like the idea. And I also think the public in general, just from, you know, my listening, sidewalks seem to be kind of a universal thing that people want, and obviously, this has to be on a county road. And I think we all, or at least I, I want to connect the town in different ways, this just seems to make sense, a unique opportunity. We seem to need to jump at.
So I just want to clarify, it's actually up to 50%? So that's why I proposed it as, we, like, I'm supportive of getting a proposal in so that we don't lose our chance. But if they come back and say, we're only going to fund Penfield to 10%, then, like, the math matters to me, so that's why it's like, we're not, I don't think, right, if they approve it, like, would we be married to accept the...
Well, then we could probably...
No.
Okay.
Okay. So I just don't want to box us in to spending 1.3 that wasn't budgeted.
Yeah, not looking to overspend on it, but if we can maximize our 50% match, then great, if they come back and...
Up to 50%?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So I just want that to be, so again, I'm supportive of it, and that's why I kind of wanted to talk it through, like, in case we, A, don't get it, or don't get the full 50% match, then we got to be prepared to cough it up from somewhere.
Come back and readjust, and, yeah, I just wanted to make sure the board's, one, supportive of going for the, this full shot, if that's the area that you want, submitting it, and then, two, committing that, yeah, if they say, yeah, let's go for it, then obviously, then we've got to either allocate ARPA funds or, you know, something else out of the general fund that, you know, would support this.
Not sure where we, oh, I'm sorry, Linda.
Go ahead.
Not sure where we are scheduling-wise for 2024 with our contractor, if we're on his schedule yet. But do you foresee any issue where we include this, and, I don't know, it doesn't work out? And we, I guess what I'm trying to say is, we don't, I wouldn't want to delay any of those other portions that were in our budget for this year. These folks have been waiting, you know, a couple of years, and I'd hate to have them get caught up in the county project, and then now we got to wait another year.
Yeah, I don't think it would preclude us from that. I mean, I think if we went ahead with our own piece, we've allocated funds for it, we've already got the contractor, you know, on board for it, so I can see our piece moving ahead no matter where we go on this. But I think this just kind of showed the connectivity, we're already kind of working on those pieces of the puzzle, and now, you know, this would, you know, kind of complete that loop.
I can also say that, you know, having received a copy of the letter myself, I also reached out to the county to inquire about the up to 50%. So there, at least the feedback that I got was that the intent is to be able to do a 50-50 match, with the idea that they do have, and I believe it's 10 million allocated to put towards this for any applications that are received, that the initial applications, kind of on that first-come, first-served basis, would get the full 50%. As the kind of pot of money starts to dwindle and does get, you know, kind of down to the last little bit, that's when that percentage may decrease and/or the county may allocate additional funding to put towards this if it is well-received and they, you know, get a lot of applications. So it sounds like if we're able to act on this fairly quickly, that we may be eligible to get that full 50%.
Is Jackson Road Extension a county road?
Yes.
It is.
Where does that fall? Because I know Jackson Road Extension has existing sidewalks, and there's just portions that are needed to complete a walk from Wayland Road up to the town, up to Plank, or, I'm sorry.
Yes, let me pull that up.
And I don't think it's a lot, but it just seems like that, to complete that sidewalk would be ideal.
Yes. Had some back and forth, you know, with a resident that was in before, and talked about completing sidewalks, and actually, their request was to basically rebuild the road. They did not want to do sidewalks outside of the right-of-way. Basically, they said the shoulder is too wide already, we'd like to see the road rebuilt as a skinnier two-lane road, but unfortunately, that's not our road, it's the county's road. So to, you know, so this is the portion of Jackson Road Extension. So our sidewalks stop, I think, just past Broom, up in here, they kind of come back to the shoulder, and then you've got a wider shoulder-down Jackson Extension that continues down, and of course, my screen is not catching up fast enough, down to Wayland Road. So there's not a long section of it.
Right.
It does have a wider shoulder in that area.
Right.
So in the past, I think people had walked on that, there are portions of sidewalk on the lower end.
Up to Autumn Oak.
Up to Autumn Oak, so there's only a small portion. So I said, yeah, the board could look at doing sidewalks out, you know, outside the right-of-way, we may need to gain easements for that. And they said, no, we, I want to see the road rebuilt, I want the wide shoulders taken away, and then you can put the sidewalks in the right-of-way. It's not our road, we can't tell the county to rebuild the road.
But is that then an all or nothing? Like, either fix the road or do nothing, or...
In their opinion was yes.
Okay.
Obviously, that doesn't have to be this board's decision. That's one resident, one person. I mean, we can look at it, and then as we come back to the, you know, the rubric and look at, you know, completing, you know, on the west side, that could be in our 2025 budget to, you know, to look at that portion. We may need easements from the neighbors, that's what I shared. I said, hey, if...
The reason I bring up Jackson Road Extension versus Jackson Road, I get Jackson Road, but that Jackson Road Extension, because there is just portions missing, so it's not a full sidewalk, and that's more of a thoroughfare for trucks.
Yeah.
You know, I know department trucks go down there, that is much more of a cut-through than the regular Jackson Road.
Yeah, no, I think it, I think it would be a great spot to do that. I think the one person's comments got more into rebuilding the road and, you know, as they shared the thoughts about how it was topped and crowned and elevation, they said basically, scrap the road, start over, you know, which would necessitate redoing drainage, would change the shoulders, I mean, that's millions of dollars, you know, project, and again, it's not our road, so we can't dictate the kind of do that. We can look at sidewalks, and, you know, we can look at going from Autumn Oak up and connecting that piece, and that may be one that ranks high in our 2025, you know, budget that would be kind of separate than, you know, what we're asking the county for right now.
Okay. Could you go back to our Excel spreadsheet that you put together, or your Google sheet that you put together, and show what we will, we will continue to do, as Bob said, these are things that we're going to do, because it's in our plan, we've already worked with the contractor, and then what we're proposing to submit for this.
Yep. So just kind of starting on the lower left, so there's a small portion of sidewalk that's on Five Mile line.
Could you do the Excel spreadsheet, is it in here?
Oh, the Excel spreadsheet, sure.
Sorry, just so I can mark it and I can understand it.
Yep. Let me come back. So that's the first portion, so Five Mile line, 1724, Five Mile line, we just have one house, that's the 312 feet, that's just south of Tall Tree. On the east side, there's one gap piece between Windsor Ridge neighborhood to be able to get up to Rothfuss Park.
Okay.
The other piece on Five Mile is from Embry to Shoe Craft, so that's something we already committed to in this year, is going from Embry east side all the way up to Shoe Craft. So those are the two pieces we've got in this year. And then the other piece that's in that block, the Plank Road, the 895 Plank Road, there's a one house that was kind of skipped, wouldn't grant an easement before, we've talked to the homeowner, they're open to granting easement now, actually, we have the easement, completing that piece, and that was that small little portion at the top.
Okay.
The other two pieces that are in this year are not in this block that we're looking at this moment. This is the one small piece up by Gentles Market at the top of the hill.
Okay.
And then Willow Pond Way, that's one that we got through CDBG or Community Development Block grant money. So that's down near Wegmans, 250 and 441 area. So those are the ones that are in this year, but they happen to kind of align nicely with, you know, that block, excuse me again, area that, you know, we're looking at here. So that was the first one, 1724, Five Mile is here, Embry to Shoe Craft is here, so that's in this year's budget. This is not, so that would be an add-on. This is the Plank Road piece that we highlighted, it's in this year's budget already, so then the Plank Road would be a new ask.
New ask.
And then the Five Mile, or excuse me, the Jackson Road down to Penfield Center would be a new ask, but it's kind of going along the same lines of where we were already going this year.
Okay. Thank you.
If you do the expanded, you know, if you get the funds from the county, how long, how much property rights do you have to acquire? Or are you, are we pretty...
We'd have to look at that. I mean, at this point, if we can work in the right-of-way, great, if we need to get easements, we got to, you know, negotiate easements, so just kind of quickly, just trying to put something together to get something before the board tonight.
Do you find that, in the past, like, your projects, when you say, I want to go down this road, that it's pretty easy to get easements from people, or, because I think, I think our office, maybe I can only think of one property on Plank Road years ago that, this road, that it's pretty easy to get easements from people? Or, because I think, I think our office, maybe I can only think of one property on Plank Road years ago that, you know, where we had to pursue eminent domain.
Some of each, you know. I mean, people talk about sidewalks that stop and go nowhere. Sometimes we, you know, can't get an easement from someone. So we have stopped in portions and brought it back to the right of way and gone around it. I know just in one case on, as you said, on Plank Road, that we did eminent domain. I know in the past, the board has not cared to go that route. Normally, we try to work with people. If we're taking a tree down, we'll replace the tree. If we're, you know, adjusting or impacting their landscaping, we'll work with them to, you know, replace it or move it back. Or if a fence gets impacted. So I think most people, if we can kinda work with them, obviously, you know, a sidewalk is new and it could have an impact, but I think if we're willing to, you know, work with them and try not to, you know, make it too impactful on their property, most people, you know, are willing to work with us on that. Other times, we're able to wholly put it in the right of way and, you know, obviously, we're working with the county, you know, no matter what on it. We'd have to do the design, submit it to the county. The county DOT would review it. If it's in the right of way, they're approving it. If it's on people's properties, then obviously we'd need to acquire easements for that.
Okay.
It is challenging. I have a little experience, but when you cut through someone's driveway, it could be significant. The one difference is it's not a condensed area, so some of the frontage is big. So a couple people could really squash the project, if you will, shoots, you know, or whoever. So a little bit different, but as Mark said, we're just trying to get the application, I think, and the goal is the goal.
Yeah.
So tonight, what do you need from us to make that?
I think at least that the board votes to make the application and, you know, obviously, you're in for, you know, whatever funds, you know, to match what we get back. Obviously, we'll come back with details. We'll have to come back with more in the future, but if you just authorize us to make the application and send it in and then say, you know, we'll match up to 50% of the 1.3 million, you know, for that portion. And then if we get it, I'm gonna have to come back and ask for additional design budget. So, but until we know what it is, I can't give you a number to say this is what the design budget is. This is what the exact numbers are, but just trying to give you some size and scope of what we're asking for. And then the county may say, we'll come back and we'll give you a Jackson Road or we'll give you a piece, portion of it. And then obviously, we can then, you know, have further conversations and amend budget and, you know, work for allocation from there.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to have staff move forward with processing the application in Monroe County for the sidewalk project.
Okay.
I'll second that, but may I please ask when submitting the application that you make, it says per the letter to give them a phone call notice ahead of time or to CC emails, but they're unsecured emails? Can I just ask that we not submit our application using an unsecured email?
Sure.
Okay. So with that caveat, I'll second.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Carrie?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Ockenden?
Aye.
Eglish?
Aye.
All aye.
Okay. So we have an informational item on Arbor Day, yes, and the event that's coming up this Saturday. I think, Mark, you're gonna share that with us?
Yes. Yeah, just wanted to put a shout out for the Saturday event that's coming up. Matt Prinzing, Sarah Waterman and the EEECC group have been working on this event for a little bit of time. So Saturday, hopefully everybody can stop out. They're giving away trees this weekend. So this is an aerial photo of the community center. So they've kinda got mapped out with the EV registration. Tent number two will be the shrub giveaway. So trying something a little bit different. This year, we've done their bare root sapling for the trees. This year, they've got shrubs. So this year, they'll be giving away two different types of shrubs. So they're both natives. So it'll be a Northern Bayberry and a Red Oger Dogwood. So obviously, first come, first serve. Once they're gone, they're gone. But I think initially, they're gonna give away one of each per person. So if you show up to the car show, show up to the event, you know, you can get a free shrub come Saturday. So I believe they're there from 10:00 AM till noon or 10:00 AM till 12:30. So please stop on out. So just wanted to kinda give that a shout out. Kudos to the EEECC and Matt and Sarah for all their efforts to pull this together and then partner for Arbor Day along with the EV Car Show.
Great.
Yeah, this is great.
I checked the weather forecast. Looks good, although it could change.
If you've seen some signs around town, Matt's been putting some little standing signs around the neighborhoods and getting it out. So if everybody's not on the website or watching this meeting tonight, hopefully they're kinda driving around and seeing some of these signs out there, but I thought it was a nice-looking sign they put together and put out for that.
Very cool. All right. Thank you. Then we have another informational item. I know brush drop-off has been forefront of our minds for a while. And I think Mark or Eric, you're gonna give us an update?
Sure.
Kinda where things stand?
So again, just to recap, you know, I know as we've been working on the design for, and, you know, concept design for the DPW over the past seven years, you know, this, you know, want to assure the board that the brush drop-off, you know, has always been considered and taken into account when looking into that site design. You know, there are a number of, you know, different site constraints, being the proximity to the wetlands on the north side of the property, you know, the solar field to the south, the existing sewer and facilities building, the fuel island and the newest pole barn on the east side of the property, and then trying to work with kinda the grading of the overall site as well as, you know, continuing to operate out of the existing garage during the construction of the new. You know, with that, over the, you know, past number of years, I know this has been conversation, you know, with not only Supervisor Leanhouse, but also with the former supervisors, town supervisors as well. You know, we wanted to look at what the, you know, current, you know, services and operations of DPW are, you know, what potential services could be, you know, feasibly done in an alternate location and what really needs to stay at this, you know, 1607 Jackson Road. You know, with that, as convenient as it is to have, you know, brush onsite and would be my preference as well, that was a service that was determined to be practical to be at an offsite location. You know, would be, certainly be more preferable to keep onsite, but possible to do elsewhere. With that, you know, we have looked at a number of locations. You know, I know, I believe Carrie sent some of the evaluation criteria of what we've been using to, you know, consider the, you know, different alternate locations, you know, wanting to take into account and use it really to be able to kinda quantify and kinda rank one, you know, any different property against another rather than being, you know, one person's personal preference over another's. So wanting to take into account the availability for towns' use, you know, providing the ideal minimum acreage, not only for kinda the current needs, but also for potential future expansion, the ability to buffer, you know, to surrounding properties, taking into account the extent of the impact to kinda natural features on the property, any required permitting, you know, because that, I guess that would certainly influence more of kinda the timeline of, you know, what could be done and how quickly, as well as the number of parcels within, you know, a given distance. If we wanna, you know, consider it to be within 500 feet, you know, for consistency from one parcel to another, and then ultimately also looking at the underlying zoning classifications, you know, for any given property. You know, with that, you know, there are a few other considerations that, you know, that should be taken into account. You know, we're kinda, if the town's, you know, looking into the possibility or option for any additional services in the future, wanna make sure that that's, you know, something that at any given site, you know, may be able to be used for. You know, I know this past Friday, Mark, Carrie, Aaron and I went and took a tour of a composting site in Henrietta. I know that's been brought up, you know, for consideration in the past and wanted to see what exactly that entailed. You know, and if that's something that we may want to do at some point in the future and how would that impact any given site. You know, wanting to also take into account the cost of any given land acquisition as well as any site improvements that would be needed for, you know, any of the given use. Again, we do not have kind of a, you know, we're not gonna, don't have a list of properties to go through, you know, all of this this evening. Something that we're, you know, continuing to work on. However, did want to share that yesterday, Mark and I had a meeting with the Town of Brighton to, you know, see if they're able to assist us with some of our needs, you know, with the anticipated construction of the DPW starting in June, you know, trying to figure out what we can do to make sure that we are able to provide continued service of brush drop-off for our residents. You know, based on that meeting, they were willing and able to assist us, you know, with their site, meaning that we would have residents continue to drop material off to us. We would then load it into our own trucks and then we would have to truck it over to their property at the top of Browncroft by 590 as they do only let commercial and municipal vehicles into that property. They don't have residential vehicles come in. So it's certainly something that we'd be able to do to accommodate that continuation of service. It could be as simple as having, you know, a drop-off kind of back here behind Town Hall in the parking lot during the same hours, Monday through Friday, from 7:30 to, you know, AM to 3:00 PM. We'd be onsite, you know, as that material is coming in to make sure that it's acceptable and then to load it into the truck and then, you know, take it away at the end of the day before the parking lot's primarily used in the evenings and the weekends. So I know that was kind of a lot. You know, wanted to at least let you guys know that kinda continuing to still look for long-term solutions for alternate locations, but at least in the short term, we do have kind of a viable option to continue to offer this service.
Anything to...
If you've got anything else to add or...
I have a question about, like, I guess I was, when you see how far back the property goes, and I know that Thousand Acre Swamp is back there, is there like a plan that shows where the wetlands are delineated so that, you know, people can understand where, why that's off limits or is, or, I mean, is it really not, is it really not an option, is it really off the table?
Yes. So I do have that plan. That was done as part of the overall site design for the DPW. A wetland delineation was done by Deluxe. I can certainly provide that. I don't have that available this evening, but I can share that with the board.
Okay. There's even, but I, that was like, I hadn't seen the property or, you know, the actual, when Mark had that up there, the parcel viewer, and you could see, you know, you know, the extent of the property that the town owns.
Yeah. So the overall property does extend quite a bit back. There's a wooded area as he's, you know, kinda showing. However, being that we back up to the Thousand Acre Swamp, the vast majority of that area essentially where the, where the tree line is, is where that wetland boundary is.
Is it subject to an easement? Also, like, have we given an easement to the nature conservancy or anything on that wetlands property back there or...
Um, I, I don't believe we have on that portion. I think their trails...
They're kinda going over here and follows the line and goes throughout the side of that.
They stay kinda further north other than where the parking lot itself is.
The only easement we have with them is that parking area that's on our, just on our land. So if you go down the road just to the north of the ambulance, the parking for the Thousand Acre Swamp is here. So it's actually on our property, but they, we did give them an easement over that. And then the trails, you can kinda see, go through the tree line and then just kinda follow into...
And even that property back there to the north, behind the ambulance, that's...
This is all, this is all wetland in here.
All wetland also.
Yep. Yeah, right where the DPW is basically backs up to the wetland limit. Eric had to get, didn't, they had to apply for special permits being that close to the wetland and actually having the building kind of right up against where that buffer is. So we've maximized out the property the best that we can. But obviously, you gotta keep on operating DPW happening on this side while you're building a new building on this side. So it's gonna be a very busy place even with our activities and then having residents in the middle of that would, you know, not be a very safe situation.
Well, a couple thoughts. I mean, we're, you know, trying to figure out the short term. It may be long term, but then the potential for tweaking, adding services, I think, in general, and maybe that includes compost someday. And I've talked to Eric a few times about the overall, and, project. I mean, it'd be almost impossible during construction. And there's a chance that we could rent, you know, a chipper, do it onsite, you know, and then process it quickly so it doesn't take the room it took before. But one thing I always come back to is the proximity of resident vehicles and, you know, our town trucks and all the activity that happens around the DPW. I just don't like the idea of doing, having residents there dropping off anything, especially when things pick up over time. So just to me, to do, certainly if we added services, doing another location seems to make sense. We are getting a lot of input, you know, from residents and we, you know, will say, anybody that has ideas, we're accepting it. We have some farmers giving us some good advice or we're gonna keep looking. This has been an ongoing thing. Only there's the short term again and the long term. And even if we find some short-term solution, you know, we won't rest till we figure this out.
Would it make it easier to find a plot of land if the town purchased its own chipper? Is that a possibility?
So it's the...
Yes.
I mean, I don't know that...
Yes and no.
I don't know that the town owning the chipper would make finding a parcel to purchase easier.
Well, we'd need less land, correct?
Depending on what chipper it was, if it was, and really, it's more, it would be more dependent on the frequency of chipping. You know, right now, kinda the way we, you know, what we've been doing through our intermunicipal agreement with Monroe County, they bring their chipper in, you know, roughly three times a year or four on occasion to grind, but we end up with a, you know, pretty massive pile in between grindings that they're then out there grinding, you know, kind of all day long for a week or so straight. If we were to, if we were to get a different style chipper, but something and did that a little bit more frequent, if it was done, you know, on a weekly basis or even, you know, a few times a week, kind of as the brush is coming in, it wouldn't necessarily need to be for, you know, quite as long a duration on any given day, you know, and really wouldn't require as much area for a pile to accumulate if you're doing it as it comes in. So that may be, you know, also be an option to potentially try to, you know, post-construction, once the building's complete, to be able to, you know, still bring brush drop-off back to this given site. Just the way, I guess what we've seen brush drop-off kind of in the past with, you know, accumulating a large pile to then grind once every three months, that's what would not be practical or fit on the site. You know, if we were to consider purchasing our own chipper and doing something a little bit more frequently, that may be an option.
And then we've gotta look at, there is some stuff with environmental permits. So right now, we fall under the county's permit. So the county basically generates the waste. So they're processing, chipping trees. They're creating the waste, which is the mulch. I mean, it's a, it's a good waste product, but that falls under a DEC permit. So some of that in the short term, we're covered by them. If we get our own chipper, we've gotta look at getting our own permitting for that. So that just adds a short-term complication, not that we can't do that. Same thing if we look at leaf pickup and composting, you get into more environmental permits we need from the DEC. So that just, you know, we would need time, you know, to get those things in place, location of where we do, and then we would be our own permit. We'd have, you know, stormwater discharge off the site, you know, so that's some of the stuff we'd have to look at for, you know, long-term. You know, doing that right now, as the county owns the chipper, they operate it, we fall under their permit. They have the coverage from the DEC for that.
Does that chipper also have the ability to compost leaves or, you know, chew up leaves to make compost, the same chipper, or are those two different?
Typically different. The counties, at least the one the county has is a top-fed tub grinder. So they're kinda putting in just larger bulk woody debris material. So, you know, sticks, branches, logs, whereas a, you know, for the leaves to be able to turn that pile is typically more of a, it kinda drives along the pile and turns that pile as it goes rather than feeding material into kind of a stationary point.
Okay. Some time ago, when the DPW project was kind of in front of us, you had a drawing, or not a drawing, but you had a map, and it was an overlay of the new building over top of the existing conditions. Is that something you can dig out?
Yeah.
I looked for it quick the other day, didn't find it, but maybe just send it out to the board as a refresher of how that footprint plays out.
Yeah, it may have kinda changed and tweaked slightly, but it's...
Whatever the newest one is.
It's gonna be pretty close, yes.
All right.
Just a couple other things to throw in that I was just remembering. But one of the things we'd like to chipper, and Eric brought this up, is maybe it's something we rent and try out as opposed to buying. And then I always think with this, especially with added services, it seems like a natural thing to partner with with other towns. And we're communicating with Webster, Perrington and Brighton and Rondacote, all good relationships and trying to navigate all these things. It would make sense to partner on some of this or purchase equipment together, however it works. So...
Has Webster responded at all? Or, I mean, if we're, go back to the, if we're doing the ambulance service for them now, perhaps they can help us with...
I mean, I think Webster's in the middle of their own DPW. Webster's building their own new DPW right now. So I think they're kinda just managing their own. Thankfully, Brighton, you know, we had agreements with the previous, obviously the supervisor, but, you know, worked with the previous DPW director, the deputy DPW director. Within the last six months, both of them have left. So Eric and I went back to make sure our agreements were still in place and make sure the relationship was still there. They're happy with what's going on. They're willing to help. They've got an outside service that chips their stuff and then they take whatever chips come in and then, you know, they take them off. So, you know, it didn't cause an issue with their agreement with, you know, with their vendor.
Doesn't, doesn't cost them anything.
Didn't cost them anything. So they...
Doesn't cost us anything.
They were happy to help. And, you know, as the supervisor said, we look to partner with other towns, shared services, you know, where we can and help each other out to hopefully lower costs for everybody.
So if I heard you correct though, Eric, it's possible we could have a temporary location to drop off brush, not chipped, but load it in a truck, drive it to the Browncroft dump on a somewhat regular basis while we're navigating our way through the project, right? That's what I'm hearing?
Yes, I believe so.
And there's no special permitting to have it dropped off or would that still be an issue?
Nope. So it's just the, the actual processing itself that requires the environmental permitting.
So yeah, as long as people are dropping off just branches and tree limbs and stuff like that, we're not generating or creating the waste. Again, Brighton or their vendor would have that permit. So we're not in need of anything additional.
And I recognize that's gonna take more manpower to haul it, but I think that, you know, sounds like a possible solution.
At least for the short term, that keeps the service available to the residents.
Yeah. Yeah. While we continue to look for, you know, a better solution, Tom Flaherty was here on Monday, Linda, and I half jokingly said the same thing, that, so we think alike. It's, I believe they do leaf pickup in Webster, but they don't provide brush drop-off, so maybe there's some, some partnership in the future, who knows? But we'll continue to talk to everybody and hopefully partner on this. Okay, anything else? All right, well, thanks, Eric. All right, I don't think any new business, any old business, with no held items or old business. I think I'd like to adjourn and move to executive session to discuss a personnel matter related to hiring a particular individual. This is pursuant to Section 105 of the New York State Public Officers Law. Can I have, do we move to move to?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, Sue, vote, please.
Carrie?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Ackenden?
Aye.
Leanhouse?
Aye.
Tecklish?
Aye.
All aye. And the time is 7:41?
Yes, it is.